Here at the special council meeting Tuesday, May 27, 2014. Madam Clerk, I will be on call.
Yes, Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Greens?
Yes.
Rourke Hall?
Storch?
Yes.
Taylor?
Here.
Williams?
Yes.
Rourke Hall?
Chairman Reed?
Here.
Council President Reddick?
Here.
We have a call with my opponent. The notice requirement provided for the open conference meeting of law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given and said notice has been transmitted to the current committee and the Star Ledger on Friday, May 16, 2014, as well as posted on the official bulletin board in the city clerk's office.
This is an amendment to Section 2, Colon, 2-10A of the Administrative Code of the City of Plainfield, 1971, a section being hereby called by the Plainfield City Council on Tuesday, May 20, and Tuesday, May 27, 2014, at 8:00 PM in the City Hall Library, 515 Washington Avenue, City of Plainfield, for the purpose of considering acting upon the following: possible amendments to the CY 2014 Plainfield Municipal Operating Budget, May 20, 2014, and a public hearing on budget amendments and possible final adoption of the Calendar Year 2014 Plainfield Municipal Operating Budget, May 27, 2014.
At a special meeting held on Tuesday, May 20, 2014, the council introduced amendments to the CY 2014, a resolution amending the budget called for a public hearing to be heard. This evening is in order to give the public an opportunity to be heard. Prior to the public hearing, a resolution authorizing the reading of the budget by title only must take place. Mr. Chairman, please read the Councilative Resolution Authorizing the Calendar Year 2014 Approved Budget Be Read By Title Only Prior to the Public Hearing.
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you all interested in budget. This great council we have is going to do, whereas the NJ SA 4A, Colon, 4-8 provides that the budget be read and by title only at the time of the public hearing if the resolution is passed by not less than a majority of the full governing body, provides that at one week prior to the date of the hearing, a complete copy of the approved budget, as advertised, has been posted in the City Hall, and copies have been made available by the clerk to persons requiring them, and whereas these two conditions have been met. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Plainfield that the calendar year 2014 approved budget be read by title prior to the public hearing.
May I have a second? Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Greens?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Williams?
Chairman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Reddick?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, will you please read the State Calendar's Year 2014 Municipal Operating Budget by title only?
Thank you, Madam President. Calendar Year 2014 Municipal Operating Budget, Municipal Budget of the City of Plainfield, County of Union for the Calendar Year 2014. And I move at public hearing on the 2014 Municipal Operating Budget now be held.
May I have a second? Any persons designed to be heard on the Calendar Year 2014 Municipal Operating Budget will now be given the opportunity to speak. Floor is open.
Floor is open. Anyone designed to speak on this budget may have a seat up there. They can take your name and address, I'll pick you proper, and your comments, please.
Yes, CD. Good evening, everyone. I'm Alex Wilson, 9th Street, Madison Avenue. I received a wire in the mail the other day, just that I want to kind of use it.
Is this in reference to the budget?
Yes. I want to use it, it's an Alphardt book. Firstly, it says honest go. So I'll be honest. Part of the problem with all the pay and the tax is a high burden. It's expensive. People have to pay because it's PMA. We've got an item in this budget that says revenue share. Right there is misinformation. If you had any interest in people saving money, seven or eight dollars, it's not compared to hundreds of dollars they would save if you were able to hold PMA accountable. They've documented legal contract issues while maintaining their standing on this astronomical level. So we're talking about honesty, and we want to really save people money. I think that's an honest assessment, because really don't mind. It says safer streets. It says we must put more police officers on the street. Yet, according to the CBAC and according to, I was hoping to correct the Riley, but I remember speaking with Director Hellwick, we've got a huge amount of overtime in the police and fire departments. Numbers have got $1.3 million. And year after year, it's acknowledged that they're popping. So you have embedded promotions as a gift from our previous mayor, Karen E. Phillips. So if you keep the pot heavy force, you're never going to get to the point of getting more police walking into the building. You want to lower taxes. Now, one way of lowering taxes is attracting commercial ratables to offset the tax burden on residential properties. But what I see in this budget is gutting the team and the wherewithal that the city has to get to that point. So basically what you're doing is you're making the city government less efficient, less effective, has not enough planning capabilities. You're denying people opportunities going forward to increase their income to make the tax burden less onerous. And you're cutting out the ability of the city to communicate what citizens need to know, what services they have to offer, what strides we're to make in this direction. So I think that's a real problem. You're cutting out the muscle, or a portion of the muscle, in this budget, and you administrate the budget, and you're leaving in all the fat. So as far as I'm concerned, if I were voting, I would vote no on this budget. I think this budget's way of structure toward foreign is ineffectual to get lower taxes to a cost more jeopardy. So as far as that goes, this budget, I say no. As far as the special meeting goes, it's all part of the same package. We've got a problem, and I say no to that. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak to the council? Take a seat, please.
Good evening. I'm Tom Cargill, 1115 Prospect Avenue. I'm here tonight to ask you to keep the promises you made in the formation meeting January, which is to support the mayor, who was elected by a 70% voter majority, to be able to turn this city around, work together collectively to help turn this city around. We've suffered long enough as a city with dysfunction and lack of perfectionism running our city. To make it, as I was pointing before, to really make a dent in our changing direction, we need to attract new commercial ratables. That's the biggest problem. Our ratables are going down, they've been going down for a long time. So it's really important that we get more commercial ratables. To do that, we need a couple things. We need economic development, which is true. We also need to market the cities in a very proactive, positive way. And that's what's been going on here for a long, long time. So the advent for professional marketing directors, literally, are the key to really creating a brand new marketing awareness of Plainfield, not just in the needed area, not just within the city itself, but for outside the city. Because that's where the investment dollars are going to come from, and so you're going to attract the investment. And I'm not talking about just people to buy homes. I'm talking more importantly, to want to invest dollars into businesses, and not just retail businesses, but industrial businesses, to bring a real serious industrial base back to the city. So I'm asking you to restore the two positions you cut last week, to give the mayor the tools he needs, to be able to bring a professional team to there on their problems of Plainfield for the long standing, and to finally put the welfare and interest of the City of Plainfield, of all the citizens of Plainfield, above that of a single man who's run the city for the last 20 years for his own purposes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Travis Pickens, where I live, I'm here about 10:45. We've been here for the last 20 years. I've been in this town for a while, and not seen a lot of new positions that were created. I did not support it, because at this time of economy, it is a time to conserve it, it's not a time to spend. We all knows about that, that when the economy is bad, you conserve it, when the economy is good, then you spend. So I think what the council have done is a good thing, to take a look at it a second time. And also in terms of the techniques, I saw, was on the video, on YouTube. So what I'm going to support is that the budget, I have read it, I have examined it, it is proper, and I think it's the best thing to happen, because people are crying out there about the taxes. Some of them are paying quite a few more additional taxes. And so most of these people are not be in position to pay each of these additional taxes. I hope, and what you guys have done has stepped right, and I hope we can give a red bullies. That's my position, and that's what I support.
My name is Adele, and I'm a student of the nation in the country. And I have not told you to watch the YouTube video about the budgets. And my concern is that we want to add positions that were taken away from the previous mayor. We reduced her office down to just a few people, and I could remember calling and not getting answered. The City of Plainfield's not here, okay? So that's what happened under the past mayor, and the board did this, okay? Cut these positions. And now, I want to see if you do a lot of things, the people at Plainfield have spoken. Now I believe it's the time for those who were responsible for removing these critical positions due to finances to now dance to their own music, okay? So I'm against it, but do not actually, what do you say? These positions are not needed, as they were not needed four years ago, okay? So we changed the situation. We have a new boss, okay? And now you want new people to help you out when you took, you undercut the last mayor and say, look, you failed. So now I say, do what you can do with the people that you do have, okay? And come to Plainfield and do their job. And that's how we speak. To say that I'm a fool after two personal cuts that were made in the budget by this council last year would be an understatement. Just because the last mayor's office didn't function, as our friend just said, does not mean that you should create a situation where this mayor's office cannot function. It is really strange that earlier this year, you approved adding a new position, chief of staff, and you approved a salary ban, and now what you want to do is take that position out entirely. That is, I believe, the height of absurdity. I don't know what has changed since then, or who is pulling the strings on this. But this citizen wants the mayor's office to be able to function. This citizen wants the mayor's office to be able to answer questions. This citizen wants the mayor's office to be able to reach out to other agencies, to the county, the state, the federal government if necessary, to help Plainfield citizens. And the proposed cut of the chief of staff position will have precisely the effect that that will not happen. And that makes me shameful, shameful. And anyone who votes not to restore that position ought to go home and take a good look at yourself in the mirror and say, no, I did it, I did it. The second thing is the public information officer. Now, we used to have one. He's sitting over there. He did a great job. We haven't had one for the past eight years, and it shows. No public information goes out to the public, to the newspapers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That too is shameful. That should never have happened, that position should never have been eliminated. Now it's back, and you have it, there's a salary ban for it, and all of us do that. It's been on the books for a long, long time. As a matter of fact, I think Dan will correct me if I'm wrong, that he was the PIO during Alphardt Williams, two terms. And we haven't had one since, really. And that is shameful. But to eliminate those two positions from the budget, I don't think you'll be able to look yourselves in the eye when you go home looking here, because that is a way of crippling the city's ability to function, to serve the city. So I urge you, restore those positions to the budget, don't pass the budget as it stands, and help the citizens of Plainfield to get the resources and the information and the assistance that they need. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, Sharon Robinson Reddick, 216 Pemberton Avenue, former mayor of Plainfield. Good to be with you again this evening. I am here to continue to talk about the things that we've been speaking about for the last couple of months. I will say that there's been some erroneous information. We did have a public information officer recently, and when Adrian Matt was the finance committee chair for this body, he recommended that we didn't need one, and so the money was cut out of the budget for our information officer, public information officer. So we did have one, Terry, somebody who was hired by a very good person, a very good at his job, he was hired by the former city administrator. I want to thank you council members for all that you've done in terms of seriously reviewing this budget. And I want you all to know that you can go home and look yourselves in the mirror and be proud of what you have done, because the word that comes to my mind is hypocrisy, how last year, and the year before, and the year before, certain things were being cut out of the budget, as Adrian Matt said that the city did not need, whether I was there or somebody else was, and how suddenly, less than a half a year into his mayorship, all these things are needed. So I want to thank you for not placating to the need for us to have political salaries. I want to thank you for understanding that we need to really look hard at the numbers and understand. And I hear in part, but those are the same people who came to this same microphone when I was mayor, and they would denounce anything that we tried to do, but they won't come to this mic right now, they won't have the guts to come to this microphone right now and say what they said before about numbers and whether or not we need certain positions in this budget. And that's what I want to say tonight. So people need to continue, I remember when somebody was my supporter, people need to continue to know what's right and support this community and stop with the political. So I thank you, one and all, for seriously reviewing. And I want to mention one other thing with regard to this budget. I heard talk about, and this is no disrespect to someone who was in the position with regard to our economic development division, but I heard a councilman here say a few weeks ago that that gentleman is the best one that we've had in that position for a number of years. And I just wanted to know, and I was totally offended for Mr. Jac Howard, who I feel did a fabulous job for the City of Plainfield. I didn't hire him, but I was glad that he worked for us. And I will also mention that Councilman Storch went to Mr. Jac Howard on a number of occasions to get information. So I think it's wrong, that gentleman was here for at least 12 years, I think it's wrong to cast aside the good work that he did, and he was very conscious with regards to our budget. We didn't have a CFO as, for a couple of years, or a final, or permanent CFO, and that's again, that goes back to Mr. Matt and who came before us. So people can't cast stones unless they know the whole picture with regard to the making of the budget, okay? So I want to thank you, thank you, thank you for the opportunities, I want to thank you for what you've done with regard to this budget. I think you've done an ominous job in looking at the different things. And I also believe that if this city was forced to do without, for instance, Barbara James, for instance, we just asked for $10,000 in that budget, and if we were forced to do without her and she represented my office with five different commissions, then I don't understand why there would then be the request to put an excessive amount of money into the budget to add on to positions. Mr. Matt said again, we didn't need a recreation division, and now we need one. Okay. Thank you.
Harold, you're a surgeon, 23 Cushing Road. I did not come because of the speed, I prepared to speak, I don't prepare remarks, but there's a microphone here, and I could never reach the microphone by whichever still talk. There have been several speakers here, most of them have actually reflected my feelings on what has happened to this budget, what happened the last week when the search and amendments were passed. But I think you all are doing an admirable job if you want to control the tax rates that we pay. I'm probably older than anybody else in this community, so I think I qualify as a senior citizen. I think I've also been in Plainfield longer than anybody else, they all, more than eight decades, except for seven years of living in top of college, and two years on a conducted tour of Europe, at our expense. But I think you are missing an important point. You're trying to control the tax rate that we pay. You're trying to control it by cutting the budget down to what you would feel to be a bare necessity, but you're wrong. But there is certain financial amount of money that you have to raise, and as the assessment rates in this community drop, it dropped precipitously, probably about 20% every year, I just figure out of my head, when people get their property reassessed, you've got so many dollars you have to raise, so you're going to raise the taxes. The end result is that you're going to still be spending the same $2,000, or $5,000, or $10,000 a year in your taxes. You're not saving, buddy. You're being shortsighted, but not trying to get new ratables into this community, make it attractive for people to come and use the transit villages as they are built. You know, Frankfurt is going up like pizza bells with new developments. Vanwood and New Garwood have new developments. So when you cut down the attractiveness of Plainfield by reducing any capability to break people into here, you're really, in essence, cutting off the city's nose despite its face. Thank you.
Say no one else comes to the table. I move the public hearing on the fiscal year 2014 municipal budget be closed. The hearing be closed.
May I have a second?
Second.
All was in favor?
Aye.
The opposing abstentions, Mr. Cal. With the order of the Chief Financial Officer, please step forward to explain the additional amendments which must be made to this budget.
As you know, we're in the state review for budget this year. The state came back with about four legal pages of issues that they wanted resolved before they were going to have approval for tight stuff. The one thing that we couldn't take care of was that in the amendment as presented last week, the auditor had repaired the amendment that reflected an increase in notes payable for the payment of the special emergency notes for Hurricane Sandy. The state wanted that revised and reclassified as deferred charge. So the amendment before the rest of the state act, other than the amendment that you had last week, it just reclassifies existing appropriations.
If otherwise, there's no change in the bottom number, just reclassification of every separate area?
Exactly. What happened last week, like I'm saying, was that they increased the amount of notes payable, and these were special emergency notes that were issued by the county to pay for the hurricane Sandy damage. When FEMA reimbursed us the money, the state mandated them to pay these notes for. In the amendment last week, the appropriation for notes payable was increased, and the state wanted it reclassified as the raising of deferred charge, and that's the only change. Bottom line, nothing's changed.
Thank you. Yes, I'll offer the accompanying resolution authorizing amendments to the calendar year 2014 municipal operating budget.
Chairman, would you please offer the calendar year 2014 municipal operating budget for adoption?
Yes, that budget, the resolution is R. 209-14, and I'll offer the accompanying resolution adopting the calendar year 2014 municipal operating budget, which has been approved as amended and approved by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, Division of Local Government Services. And be it resolved by the municipal council of the City of Plainfield, County of Union, that the budget here before set for is hereby adopted and shall constitute an appropriate
adopted and shall constitute an appropriation for the purposes stated of the sums therein set forth as appropriations and authorization of the amount of $74,506,2,926.71, and move its adoption. One minute, second.
Madam clerk, may I have a roll call?
This is the budget.
And so before we vote, we have a discussion.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm going to vote yes on this topic with a lot of, a lot of, except for very end of the process. I respect my colleagues' right to disagree with my cuts. I think the cuts, the personnel cuts are ill-advised. I think the reasons that we heard all along make no sense for the future, they only relate to the past. The past is something we need to go way beyond. So the process that I find very troubling is that I eagerly volunteer to be a member of finance. In the past years, I found the finance committee really made a difference. We actually, well, we reviewed the budget, we had discussions, we made recommendations back to the council, and that the finance committee members actually had some say about what the recommendations are going to be. I didn't find that to be the case with this plan. I attended two meetings, and I found that everything seemed to have been predetermined. So that when I made a recommendation to my colleagues, Mr. Reeves and Ms. Taylor, that we could find a way to move forward in a collaborative fashion with the administration, and instead of making all of the, what I consider ill-advised cuts, that we make that to those worst cuts. And that we, in addition, that we allow the administration to determine where those cuts were made. And I found that my colleagues on the finance committee did not, didn't even want to discuss it, just moved on and just keep pushing. And I just felt a very strong feeling that everything was predetermined by the state and that I had no say in that. They weren't even involved. And I still feel that way. So I am going to vote yes, but I do need to express my concern about this process. I do think it's very much driven by the past. I think it's driven by the need to lash out for the conflicts of the past. And I just wish for the day when this council or some future council will get past all of the dysfunction that we had in previous city governments and actually look to the future and work collaboratively to look towards some solutions. I just want to close by saying that I have faith in this administration, and I think they're going to make progress despite of the council. And I hope that at some point soon the council will come along and actually be work collaborative. Look forward to that.
Thank you.
I am very sorry that my colleague has disappointed you and expresses a complaint. There was no preoccupation anywhere. I do believe that people are not stuck in the past, that they feel that there is a need to move forward with an understanding of the past. You don't know that the past is not what you're going to do in the future. There are some people who want to eliminate the past because they're in position or they're in, they're the influence in the city, they feel, and they want to just do according to their interests. That is not going to happen. And I think that the collaboration has to go both ways. I am not surprised that my colleague feels this way because he has an open door and probably is part of the thinking of what the administration is doing. I do not have that type of relationship or know was I ever invited in terms of this administration. And I am very saddened by the remarks, the continued, I'm going to say, the continued dogging of the council. And it's unfortunate that certain members of the council who are close to the mayor tend to feel that they can be upset when things don't go their way, they don't even appreciate or want to collaborate with the folks who have a different point of view. I also want for the day that we are going to learn from the past and move into the future and that the council, as well as the mayor's office, will be able to do that.
And Madam clerk, may I have a roll call? Yes, Councilman is Harrell. Reeves?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Sellar?
Yes.
Chairman Reeves?
Yes.
Council President Reeves?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Now we have citizens' participation. Public comments during this session of the agenda must be limited to matters within jurisdiction of the city of Plainfield. A total of 30 minutes have been allocated for all public comments to be presented. If you wish to be heard, you may amend the address to the clerk for the class. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount on any single speaker is allowed, will be limited to five minutes. The floor is now reserved.
Say no one takes the seat, Madam President, I move that public hearing be closed.
Second. All was in favor?
Aye.
The opposed, any abstentions motion cap?
Okay, before we adjourn, I want to make a comment about a video that was on the public access channel, as well as YouTube, and I understand Facebook, I don't do Facebook. Some think that the video was appropriate. I think the video was unappropriate. And my reason being is because this is a city public station, and I don't feel like this public station should be used to address personal issues. I did find some of the information in this video to be of city's business, but the majority of this video was not about the city's business. And I would like to know from Corporation Council, what can be done about this video?
Thank you, Council President. I have had an opportunity to review the video. I looked at our city's code with regard to political activity during city work time. I also looked at our code provisions on use of public property while, for personal use. And I also reviewed the bylaws for our PCT paper. It is my opinion, from purely legal standpoint, that what I viewed on that tape was not illegal. However, I understand that the council may disapprove of what it saw. And so although there is a little legality to that, the council wishes to approve that action, that can be done by resolution.
For me, I totally disapprove of that action. When you talk about you want to rebrand Plainfield, to make a video of such, that is not rebranding Plainfield. And I look at it as unethical. I could be wrong, but I look at it as unethical. This is city's property, and I too looked at the information that was presented in reference to the bylaws and reference to using public access channel. So for me, I'm just talking for me, I'm very disappointed in the video. You know, if there's an issue, which I don't see an issue, it should be addressed to the council. It should not be addressed abusing city's time. I mean, it's just me, and I'm upset about it. I'm not upset to the point where, I'm not, I'm upset because it's freedom of speech and it's opening the door for anyone to be able to come to Plainfield and make a video. I can make a video, but I don't find it necessary to get on camera and rebuttal what was said. I don't find it necessary to use city's time for such a video. And it was, the information that was presented in that video, to me, I could be wrong, was unethical. So I'm looking to the council, directed the council to see if anyone else feel the same, and if you guys want to take this a little step further.
I don't know if it was ethical, if it was ethical or unethical, but I believe that if you have an issue, at least you face your opponent and you talk that. You don't come on the public radio to discuss your, you know, whatever, whatever the problem is. Before you come, before you come out to the public, you at least go to the person and you, I mean, have your man enough or we want enough? You go to the person and you talk it over, and you figure out what can be done. Why am I having such a hard time? And then you don't try to blame everybody else because you find you're having, you're having a hard time. Real leadership is that when you can't get one thing done one way, you try to find another way to do, to solve the solution. You don't just stop and blame everybody else because you don't have your way. That's not it.
Madam President, I know we will have a special meeting regarding this issue on the 29th Thursday at 8:00 p.m. in this particular facility, so I'll save my comment for there. But if I may just express appreciation for adoption of the budget, it wasn't cut as much as I would have liked to see, and my colleague would have liked to have seen. I had so many calls, "Please do not raise our taxes. We just can't afford it." And I got calls from people in my bracket, which is the senior citizens, requesting that. The people that sit here now, starting with the CFO, and Mr. Ron Jean, our financial person, and our council, and our person that's economic development, and our, all of them, we approved. I think we did not approve two of them. And, you know, that's a good start. And we started off on a bad foot. We had a crazy budget presented to us that was, in my opinion, cut hotbed. And it was presented at the last second of our January 6 meeting, and we continued that effort until we finally started to get budgets that Mr. Jean put together and Mr. Smiley, and they're good people. And I also want to reiterate-
Mr. Wes, you said Mr. Wes?
Oh, Mr. Wes, I'm sorry. Mr. Smiley helped Mr. Wes. Mr. Smiley, our business manager. Let me say this, and I have true faith in our leader, Mr. Matt. He's been on this council for 12 years plus. He's been in Lisbon for three years. He worked in Roselle Park in a very high position, and he's now working in Orange and I understand that they may have a few problems, but he's there to help solve them. He will take this $74 million and use it to make our city better. However, he need to talk to us and sit down, and I would join him in any discussion that he would need to have with anybody coming into the city to show them that we, all with the mayor, we have not said anything disparaging against this Matt. No, I haven't. I have talked with and got good results from our economic development. Mr. Sanchez, he's working with us. And I agree with Mr. Smiley when he said the city is not so friendly to businesses. And I brought a situation which demonstrates that. We have a new restaurant they wanted to shut down because of there are no driveway exits, quite frankly. So, yes, and we passed budgets before. We have an increase of about $8, I think this budget will give us $7 or something. Please work with us. Let us on the council continue to be vigilant and do our jobs. This is our budget now. We give it to the mayor to administer, and he's got some good people working with him that's going to do it. And come this time next year, I will not be here, incidentally. I'm leaving on the 31st. The God is willing to let me be that long. And I understand that a few people say that'd be a damn good thing when you get your ass off the council. I understand about the air, but that's what I was told. They said it. So please, let's work with the mayor, let's work with his administrators and his personnel that he has selected. And let's do this in a good friendly manner so we can get some people in here to improve our conditions. I also suggest that we start to talk with the Chamber of Commerce, who is responsible for our businesses here in the city as well, and that's an organization that we should respect. I also think we should respect the real estate industry. It's my understanding that we have not sat down with them at all to find out what the problems are with selling houses and getting people into the city of Plainfield. I also think that we need to get on our inspection and the banks that own the foreclosed homes. You know, I call and I got five houses that's developing a jungle behind that house and in front. The banks are not doing what they're supposed to do, and I'm going to propose that we tighten up our artners to make them pay when they don't. Please, let's work with this new mayor, Mr. Matt. Let's see if we can cut out some of the rhetoric that keep separating us. Let's work with our state assemblyman. He is not the mayor. He is not the mayor. He's the chairman of our Democratic City Committee. He's the chairman of the Union County Democratic Committee, and he's our assemblyman for the 22nd district. He is not the mayor, and I don't think he want to be the mayor, quite frankly, because he probably could have years ago. Let's work with each person that Mr. Matt has chosen to carry out his administrative work. Also, we'd like Mr. Matt to be here to do the job that I think is the city administrators, as well as the mayor, to do as far as the broadcasting and getting people into the city that have money. Please, I thank you for listening to me for about-
I have received our comments from our colleagues, and I definitely see that the council tried very hard to work with this question. And I do agree that we do have staff who are excellent, and if they are allowed to do their job, they will be excellent for our city. And I think my sign of discipline to the past is to say that they are to be giving advice to the mayor through the trade partners, because that's who we expect on top of the places and not beautiful porn. But I want to also say that the mayor is the chair leader of our city. The mayor's image, the mayor as the leader, is the person singularly who sets a tone for the citizens and for the people of Plainfield. And I must say that I did not at first even look at this to this video or whatever it is, the message. And I did feel that some of what he said was excellent, and from his heart that he wants to do well in the city and he wants to be able to implement his vision. But what he fails to understand is that he is only one aspect of the leadership of our city. No other mayor, from my understanding, has ever gone on, on the air, public access TV and lambasted the people that he lambasted, particularly the city council, who he really needs to get along with to work if you want to- If you want to be respected, you have to give respect. And I did not appreciate the way that he lambasted us, whatever you might think about someone else who's not in position in the city. We are here, and we're here every day of August, with the city officials and leaders in the community. And I think that we feel that, I feel that that was low-belt, below the belt. I also question, because I have never seen a mayor do this, not, not one mayor has ever done anything like this, and said about whatever this is, about someone being in charge of the council. Because if you know the reality, then just go ahead and be the leader. And we have said, I've said to our mayor personally, that you got to count your votes. This is not an autocratic, this is a democracy. And whether you like it or not, this is a legal body, the city council. And yeah, we have some issues and problems that we need to address, yeah, but we have to keep working at it till we get what is the best ways, what I call a win-win for the citizens of Plainfield. But this kind of negative talk as the leader of our city does not help, it brings us further into the muck and mire, and it is untrue. It is untrue that you are denying the power of the council, you are denigrating those partners that are here to work with you. And it is not your government, it belongs to the people of Plainfield. And the way we work and functions that we have are different. The legislative does not do the same thing that the executive does. But the mayor has to be the cheerleader. And, and when you don't get what you want, the effectiveness of your leadership is your ability to relate and to do the win-win, the give and take. Sometimes it's not easy, and, but you have to have an attitude of inclusion, which would include the city council. I am very disturbed that on city time, that he spoke this way to people as if he was doing the mayor all responsibilities. This was totally illegal. And for you to say, sir, that it has no illegal, or it's certainly something of a question of ethics, no one has ever done this before in Plainfield, and I'm aware of it. So there is a question of ethics, and we have a responsibility as a council to investigate this. And I want to make sure that someone says, "This is too far. You pushed the envelope too far." And I will do whatever that entity says, but to say that there was nothing done inappropriate, is, I don't think that's really true. What I'm going to say, you said it was not legal. That's what, there are some things that are not, maybe not to the point of the legality, but it's certainly unethical. And, and I do believe that someone should give him that kind of guidance. And so this is not acceptable to me. And, and so many people have commented that this was unheard of, and their eyes are like, "Did he do this in the mayor's seat?" Yes, he didn't do it on the political campaign. He did it in the seat of the mayor, and he used our time, public access TV, to lambast somebody politically, to just deal with the politics. That is not acceptable. That is not acceptable. And I do think the council has to show some leadership, and, and looking into this matter, okay? Whatever happens in the end, we certainly do. Maybe there's a problem, I don't know what the problem is in terms of why you feel comfortable saying something like that while you're sitting in the mayor's seat during the day that you're working as the mayor. You don't do this, I've never heard of this before. And then to lambast the council that way it was done, so-and-so's in control, this, I don't, the citizens can say whatever they wish, because they can believe in you windows, they can believe or sit on whatever sides they want politically, but when the city leader says this, then we need to, there's something wrong, and it should not be tolerated. And, and whatever happens, yes, it should be investigated, to the degree that it was improper, is what I'm talking about. Not that it might have been in the narrow sense of legality, illegal, but it was definitely unethical. No other mayor has done this. No other mayor. You should buy your own time, and you do that through your political resources. You don't take city time and do such a thing. I think, I, I've never heard of this, and I don't think it's acceptable. The council needs to address this, and I, I will say to us that we better do something about this, in the way that we feel it we can, but it doesn't repeat, sir.
I would like to say that I thought that Mayor's Corner speech was, I thought that the Mayor's Corner program was right on point. I think that the administration laid out its case, and I look forward to the other show that should be here called the Council's Corner, where the council gets an opportunity as well to utilize the Public Access Channel in advancing his ideas. I've seen press conferences, I've seen mayoral conferences all the time. We had the previous administration, the previous administrations that, you know, discussed their agenda moving forward, et cetera. So, you know, I don't see anything I'm fine with this. People can disagree with the content and so forth, but I don't find it to be in any way objectionable. Power of the airwaves belongs to everyone in the city, including the administration, including the governing body. So I think that if someone wants to air a rebuttal, a substantive rebuttal to come in here, they definitely should be able to do that. Thank you. Thank you.
All those in favor? Are there votes, are there stents, motion counts?